Good evening, I'd like to call the Clearlake City Council meeting and Redeveloped Successory Agency for the city of Clearlake to be held at Clearlake City Chambers at 14050 Olympic Drive, Clearlake, California, and 95422. Today is Thursday, January 12th, 2017. It is 6:01 PM. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdon?
Present.
Councilmember Harris, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could just remain standing. In the next week, we're going to see a transition of power in our country. Just ask that we all keep our positive thoughts as Americans, that that transition is smooth, and we can come together as a country. Mr. Folsom, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item number four for business. We've had some modification to the information that we sent you, but I want to-
Okay. So pulling item four. Anything else?
No, sir.
You remember the council?
Nothing.
Very well. Dog motion.
I'll move to accept the agenda with the pulling of item four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say none. The agenda is adopted. Mr. Jones, any action from closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor, no action, just taking closed session.
Very good. And I'm looking to see if Ms. Hutchins is out there, and I don't see her. So I'll hold this presentation to her, and we can move forward with public comment. Everybody good with that? All right. Moving on to public comment. Public comment is a time when you can come forward and address the council on items not on our agenda. You can speak up to three minutes. We are not able to answer or address your questions. We'll simply take the information as we can. We might be able to direct you to a city staff member who can help you, but otherwise we're not able to make comment. So anyone wishing to address the council, this is your time. Please step forward. If you could just introduce yourself.
My name's Rose Anderson.
Come on up to the mic, Rose Anderson. Good to see you again.
Good to see you too. How's everybody today? We have been having issues again with the homeless. I know you guys are trying to work on getting a warming center, but it's getting pretty darn cold out there. Is there any progress on that? Because we need something.
And again, we can't answer questions, but I do know your issues, and I thank you for bringing them to us.
We also have another issue of Clearlake PD harassing the homeless. I mean, they've been coming out to the camps out there, basically threatening, saying, "Well, you guys have some time to get out. If you don't get out, we're throwing you in jail, keep you in jail as long as we can." Stuff like this. Some of the homeless are on probation and parole, and they're kind of getting a little skittish about it because, you know, they're not wanting to violate. And I don't think it's right for Clearlake PD to come out and keep harassing and giving us the same ticket over and over again when we're already trying to better themselves pretty much. And, I mean, if they can, like, not say stuff to where it's not an everyday thing, I mean, they see one of the homeless walking down the street or whatever, they'd stop them and harass them. "Oh yeah, what are you doing? What you got, you know?" And some of these people are in on sorts of seizure. They're just coming out there and just making it very hard on us when we're trying to find a way out of somewhere else.
I might suggest that we have a break, or there's time, you could talk to Lieutenant Sully, see if we can work that out.
Okay.
I also know we have a point in time count coming up, and I encourage everyone to be a part of that.
Okay.
So it'll be some good numbers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council? This is best time to do it. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and move on to our consent agenda. Mr. Folsom? Yeah? Anybody wanting to pull anything with consent? No? Motion? Oh, does the public have anything they'd like us to pull? Thank you, Joyce. Seeing none, I'll bring it back.
I'd like to make the motion and accept the consent items two, three, five, six, seven, and eight.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Moving on to business. Councilmember, orientation and review, council norms and procedures, Mr. Folsom.
Actually, here's where I'm going to do number four.
Oh, here's where we're going to do number four?
Yeah. So we can open up the lens on that?
You told me, it's got its own model.
Oh, okay. Any funny stories you want to tell? Okay, so this is the authorization to adjust the Measure P budget to purchase five police interceptor vehicles. Current situation is that due to damage to our existing fleet, we currently have a shortage of police vehicles. A new police department SUV costs approximately $42,000 per vehicle. We recently had some very good experience purchasing used police department vehicles for very much less through Chicago Motors. One of them we used for the school resource officer, the other we're using for traffic enforcement. They were really nice cars. The reason we've pulled this from the consent agenda is we have a couple of changes. In the original staff report that was sent to you, we had our eye on some vehicles that are no longer available. In getting ahold of what we can see from Chicago Motors now, we get actually for about approximately $10,000 more, we can get upgraded cars with much fewer miles. We think that it's still a really good deal. The original staff report was based on the vehicles that have since been sold. These updated costs for the new five used vehicles is $54,000. I think it was 45 in the original staff report, and that is delivered to the city. So the total cost for five police department vehicles would not exceed $70,000. That would include all the taxes, all the painting, all the upfitting of the vehicles to, so that they're straight ready to go. Is there anything else that you want to add to that?
I believe you covered it, I believe you covered it all, and that is correct. The vehicles that we did base our staff report on, they were sold. The vehicles that we're looking at now, that'll bring our fleet to, everything on patrol will have less than 100,000 miles on it. Most of these vehicles, the highest mileage vehicle that we're looking at is 50,000 miles in this, for our patrol operations.
And then PD intends to rotate out the vehicles to the VIPs, so if they have a little bit- the VIP cards right now aren't that good, so the ones that they will be getting aren't great. They've got a lot of hard Clearlake miles on them, but they're still a little bit better than what they've got. So our recommended action would be to adopt resolution number 2017-01. That concludes my report.
Mr. Folsom, any questions? Your staff?
So these are just regular vehicles, there's no SUVs or anything like that? They're just the regular cars?
The four patrol units that we're going to use on patrol, there are Crown Victoria police vehicles, there is one SUV, it's a, it is a police rated vehicle, and that's going to be for unmarked operations.
Great, that's great.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up to public. Any member of the public wishing to comment on this item? This is your time, you have up to three minutes. Okay, seeing no one racing to the mic, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for action or further deliberation.
If no one else has anything to say, I think obviously others are finding Chicago Motors as well, so it's not a well-kept secret any longer, but I appreciate the price that we're finding it at. So I'd like to make an motion to adopt resolution number 2017-01, and read it by title only. And where's the title?
Where is it?
On the other one, that's fine. Resolution of the city of Clearlake authorizing the police department to purchase five police department vehicles.
No, second.
Have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdon?
Aye.
Thank you all. We just had one comment. When those new vehicles come in, can some of the old cars go away in the parking lot?
Yes, the, some of the vehicles will transition into VIPs, and the other ones that are basically no use to us will be circulated out, I guess.
Thank you. Now we can go to item nine.
Yes.
Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. For this, I will introduce our city clerk, Melissa Swanson.
Mayor and council members, after a council member election, it's in the norms and procedures that we review those norms and procedures, so I have an exciting PowerPoint that shall be attached. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
It's not going to be exciting. I'm expecting excitement.
All right. An overview of the council responsibilities. The city of Clearlake is a general law city, operating under the council manager plan, and the city manager's duties shall define how the city council and city manager interact and perform their respective duties and responsibilities. The city council has the following duties and responsibilities. They appoint the city manager and the city attorney, they establish boards, and appoint those members. They are responsible for legislative decisions. Because they are a legislative body, its members are the community's decision-makers. Power is centralized in the elected council as a whole, and not within individual members of the council. The council approves the budget and determines public services. It focuses on the community's goals, major projects, and long-term considerations such as community growth, financing, and strategic planning. The council hires the city manager to carry out administrative responsibilities and supervises the city manager. So the city manager, as I said, is hired to serve the city council and the community, and to administer the city's projects, programs, and public services on behalf of the council. The city manager is responsible for preparation of a recommended budget, for recruitment, hiring, and supervision of personnel, contractors, and consultants, for implementation of the council's policies, programs, and public services, and providing professional advice on policy matters, intergovernmental affairs, economic development, and environmental issues, and also day-to-day management of city business and personnel. All right, in December of each year, the council selects and appoints a mayor and vice mayor from within the council. That's done, as you know, from the December meeting that we just had, by majority vote of the council after a nomination and a second. So that period of time for the mayor and vice mayor's terms is January 1st to December 31st, unless there's a majority of the council to vote otherwise at any other time. So correspondence, with some exceptions, proposed correspondence from individual council members or the mayor on city stationery shall be reviewed by the council in draft form prior to release. On occasion, if there's an urgent request from the League of California Cities for correspondence concerning legislation directly affecting our city, then there is a, an agreement that the city mayor or city manager can send a letter on behalf of the city to the League or to legislators. City letterhead is available for routine or discretionary correspondence, such as thank you letters, that's prepared by staff for signature or by the mayor. Regional board attendance. The role of the council on regional boards varies depending on the nature of the appointment, and at the end of our meeting tonight, the mayor will make appointments to various boards and committees. So representing the interests of Clearlake is appropriate on some of the boards. This is generally the case when other local governments also have their own representation. The positions taken by the appointed representative are to be in alignment with positions that the council has taken on issues that directly impact our city. If an issue should arise that is specific to Clearlake and the council has not taken a position, the issue should be discussed by the council prior to taking a formal position at the board meeting, to assure that that's in alignment with the majority of the council's position. Council representatives to various boards should keep the council informed of ongoing business through brief oral or written reports to the council during the council member report section of the regular meeting agenda. So that's at the end, you're all familiar. Council members should make a good faith effort to attend all regional meetings that require a quorum of the appointed members. Attendance should not be less than 75% of all scheduled meetings. If a council member is unable to attend, they should notify their alternate, so someone else can go in their place. Ethics training, AB 1234 is required of all city officials and elected officials by every two years designated by the Conflict of Interests Code, which is available for free online through the FPPC's website. Also, something new is AB 1661, which states that elected and city officials must have sexual harassment prevention training. That's going to be coming forward through an online training through our Joint Power Authority. The council majority gives direction to the city manager and the city attorney. Council members are always free to go to the city manager to discuss city business. Issues concerning the performance of a department or any employee must be directed to the city manager. Direction to employees other than the city manager or city attorney is the prerogative of the city manager. In passing along critical information, the city manager will be responsible for contacting all council members, but the city manager can delegate that to department heads. Agenda item questions. If a council member has an question on a subject, the council member should contact the city manager prior to any meeting at which the subject should be, will be discussed. That doesn't restrict council members from asking questions during a council meeting. The city council members are to work through the city manager or city attorneys on issues, concerns, and questions. That's to allow the senior professional staff with a proper education, training, experience in all issues, laws, and the city council's policies to coordinate a response that's full and complete. This can reduce errors or misunderstandings by staff members that aren't necessarily knowledgeable on all issues. This can provide a better overall response. So as for individual council members' requests, council members shall make their requests to, for information to the city manager or myself, and not to, not directly to individual members of staff. The use of city staff, including the city manager, to respond to an individual council member's request for any purpose that exceeds more than one hour of total staff time must be approved by the majority vote of the council. The individual council member may make his request, his or her request orally or in writing to myself or to the city manager. Then the city manager makes an estimate of the cost and how the request affects the council's goals and objectives, and also in the future, how it affects our strategic plan. It's then deliberated by the council at the next council meeting. An irrespective of the staff time required to respond to each council member's request. Each request by the individual council members should be limited to three to five requests per week. Solicitor, just a few of the city committees and commissions. We have several ad hoc committees also working on different projects. And as I stated before, appointments are made annually, and it'll be at the general meeting, this meeting. So recruitment is set to begin soon for the planning commission, terms expiring in March. An ad hoc committee consisting of the mayor, the vice mayor, and the planning commission chair will meet after applications are pulled, and they make a recommendation to the council, and the council interviews up to the top three candidates for each seat. So we have up to possibly nine, depending on how many applications we'll receive. So we'll start that probably next week, the terms end March 11th. And we have one vacant and two, two additional coming forward. So those are our boards. Also to include the Measure B oversight, citizens oversight board. So appointments will be made for that at the next council meeting. Applications are due January 19th. All persons appointed by the full council to the boards and committees serve at the pleasure of the council and serve for the term indicated or until a successor has been appointed. Members of the boards and committees appointed by the full council are interviewed at a full meeting and selected by motion and majority vote of the council. They're expected to regularly attend and participate on those commissions and committees at least 75% of those meetings over a period of the year, otherwise they're subject to removal by the council or the council member who appointed them, if it's a council member appointment, such as a Measure B oversight committee. All postings are governed by the Brown Act. The meetings are to be held open to the public unless it's closed session, and the meetings are broadcasted and put on pig TV. So on your consent agenda tonight, you had a calendar of the meetings for the next year, second and fourth Thursdays, and on that calendar, we did also propose cancellation of the second November and second December meeting, which we traditionally canceled. Regular meetings are terminated at 10:00, unless the mayor by majority vote extended past 10:00. And the council must meet once per month. We can cancel up to four meetings per year. Special meetings can be called by the mayor and the majority of the council with 24-hour notice to the public. That's only for a special meeting. They are study sessions normally, joint meetings with other boards, things like that, or in such case that there's business that can't wait until the next council meeting. Closed session of our meetings of the council to discuss city business in private consultation with the city attorney as authorized under the Brown Act. Emergency meetings can also be called, and also it takes three members of the council to constitute a quorum, and at least three members must be present in order to do any business. Otherwise, the meeting is then postponed to, I guess, normally we adjourn it to the next council meeting or whenever we can get anybody together. Sometimes people get sick at the last minute, it happens. So council discussion. Any briefings involving a majority of the council have to be open to the public and properly noticed, but that doesn't include an informational or advisory memo from staff, because that doesn't violate the Brown Act. For example, emails from the city manager to the council giving a weekly update, that's not a violation of the Brown Act, as long as you don't reply all and deliberate within that email system. Don't reply all, it says. So council cannot meet to discuss city business outside of a properly noticed meeting with a few exceptions, if there's ceremonial or social events, Thursday morning breakfast, as long as you don't discuss city business. So violations of the Brown Act include what's called serial meetings, and they occur when a majority of the council members have communicated together about an issue and have developed an opinion. That can happen when council members either directly or indirectly hear each other's opinion on an issue enough to develop an agreement on the topic. That includes email, like I just said. So serial meetings include daisy chain meetings. For example, when council member Harris calls council member Overton to talk about a topic, and then council member Overton calls vice mayor Sabatier and talks about the same topic and says what you've all discussed, that's a violation of the Brown Act. That was just an example, of course that hasn't happened. Hub and spoke meeting is when, for example, a council member contacts the city manager and talks about a certain topic, and then another council member talks to the city manager about the same topic, and the city manager relates to the second council member how each one has expressed their opinion on the topic. So that means that the city manager is now giving out the information to all the council members, taking, taking their opinions and giving it to another council member. That's a violation of the Brown Act. So as for the agenda, the mayor, the city manager, and myself organize the agenda. We have an agenda request policy adopted on August 14th, 2008, which is a procedure for the public to ask for an item to be on the agenda. If, normally if it's, normally we get requests for proclamations, and then I relay those to the mayor and the city manager, and it's not often not too controversial. If it's something that's controversial, we do have a procedure for an agenda committee to meet and discuss the item to, to see if it's something that should be on the agenda. For council members, there's an item under the agenda called future city council items, and at that time, the city council member can ask for an item to be placed on the agenda if they get a consensus from two other members. And also, you can always meet with the city manager- And also, you can always meet with the city manager outside of the meeting and talk to him specifically, not with other council members. The mayor is responsible for maintaining the order and decorum of the meetings. It's the duty and the responsibility of the mayor to ensure that the rules of operation and decorum are observed. The mayor maintains control of communications between council members and among the council and staff and public. The mayor shall intervene when a council member, staff, or other meeting participant is being verbally or otherwise attacked by a member of the public. So we're going to go over Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which are so exciting, awesome, parliamentary procedure. But I wanted to state that it's the practice of the city council for the mayor to provide council members an opportunity to ask questions of staff, comment on or discuss any agendaized item in order to form a consensus before the motion is offered. After such discussion, the mayor or council member may make a motion which will go through. Before the motion can be considered or discussed, it must be seconded. Once a motion has been properly made and seconded, the mayor opens the matter to full discussion after offering the first opportunity to speak to the moving party, and therefore thereafter, any council member recognized by the mayor. It's the council's job to do the business of the public. We need to tell the public what the council is doing, keep the public informed while the council is doing it, and when the council makes a decision, tell the public what it was. And do that all in a manner that's easily understood. So the mayor announces the agenda item number, states the agenda item's subject, and the format for considering the item, depending on what heading it's under. The consent agenda is taken all at once. Public hearings have a set protocol, which is listed in your agenda. So we have to open up a public hearing, close a public hearing by motion, it's all in your So then we give the staff report, then you ask technical questions of staff, invite public comments, and then close the public comment and discuss. There are three basic motions. There's one that puts forward the decision for the council's consideration, which is the basic motion you use most of the time, iso move, blah, 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 then you second. There's a motion to amend, which changes a basic motion if after discussion on the motion, someone decides that there needs to be a change or something additional is needed. The person that made the motion must accept that as well as the person who seconded it. There's also what's called a substitute motion, and that is something that is not related to the first motion. There can be up to three motions on the floor at a time. So you take them in the order that they were made, and basically if they're opposite, if they're opposite motions, the first one is the one that goes, you can't really, yeah.
Heard first.
Yes, the one that's heard first, thank you. So motions that are not debatable are motions to adjourn, which we don't normally use. It can be used if it's in the middle of a meeting and somebody says, it's time to go, and they make a motion to adjourn. Passes or doesn't pass, not debatable. Motion to recess, a motion to fix the time to adjourn, motion to table the item, and they all require a majority vote, except for the motion to limit debate, which is timing an item, saying we're not going to hear this for longer than 45 minutes. That takes a four out of five vote, which is two-thirds. So after a vote is taken, you can ask for reconsideration. If someone doesn't agree with the vote or the discussion, they can ask to reconsider the item. That can only be done at the same meeting by a member who voted in the majority. And if the motion is passed, it's discussed and debated all over again. So we discuss the majority vote. Some ordinances, such as the sales tax ordinance, require a four of this vote. And tie votes occur when there's a two-two vote with a council member absent or abstaining. So there's a point of privilege during a meeting, a point of order, and an appeal. A point of privilege would be used if a council member can't hear over the air conditioning. It just stops the meeting for a second, say, hey, there's something going on, I'm uncomfortable or I can't hear, you know, that's a point of privilege. A point of order is used when someone is talking about something not related to the item that you're discussing, something completely off-topic. So if a council member doesn't agree with a ruling of the mayor on these items or another item, they can appeal that. If the appeal is seconded and the majority is voted, the ruling is reversed. That could be an instance where the sergeant-at-arms has to remove someone, the mayor says, asks the city manager, please remove this person, and the other council members don't feel the same way, they can vote and overrule that. So the calls for order of the day, that's another item that a council member can use to state that the discussion has gone off-topic. The mayor then calls for the council to return to the agenda item. Discussion is basically saying, hey, you guys, you know, bring back the discussion, let's start talking again about what's going on. So that's called calls for order of the day. The maker of a motion can withdraw the motion on the floor, as long as it hasn't been voted on. If it's been voted on, that's a motion for reconsideration. Questions?
If you have any input, comment, or a question for Melissa, you're welcome to ask now. See, and I'll bring it back. And let's see. I intend to update on the authorization for checks signing. Mr. Bolson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Chris McDowell, our finance director for this.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This is a fairly routine item that really does two things in this resolution. When we have a change in the council, typically we need to revise the signature cards because typically the signers on the card are the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, the finance director, and up until very recently, the police chief. We are changing that because the current chief is unavailable and has been unavailable for a period of time, so we're switching it over to the public works director. The signature cards deal with basically our accounts that deal with regular receivables and payables, which would be the West America account, and the Bank of the West account, which deals with all of our payroll checks. And then US Bank is our bank that deals with our redevelopment bond funds that we have to maintain on file with our US Bank. The other thing that this resolution is doing is it will now appoint the finance director as the city treasurer. As you remember, the city treasurer is an elected position. We had an election that just completed to convert that to an appointed city treasurer. That lost, so we're still with an elected city treasurer, but no one has run for the position for quite some time. If the position of city treasurer becomes vacant, the city manager is automatically appointed the city treasurer. And back in 2013, prior to my being here, the city manager was appointed by the council at that time to be the city treasurer. And that was done because the city had had a period of quite a number of interim finance directors, and rather than appointing an interim as a city treasurer, they just left it with the city manager. I've been here for two and a half years and probably will stay for a while, I hope. So the expectation is that I will take over the duties that I've been performing for two and a half years anyway, which is to have the city treasurer in addition to being the finance director. So therefore, what we're doing is we're asking you to adopt Resolution Number 2017-04, approving the signature cards and the appointment of the city director. Any answering questions? Okay.
Councilmember, we're open. Of course you do.
Okay, so I'm curious, and it says, okay, so I thought, I mean, isn't the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, and the finance director enough for signatures? Is there a reason why we're adding public works or even the chief of police? I didn't realize the chief of police was on there. So, but it seems to me like it's, when I came on, it was the mayor, the vice mayor, city manager, and one other signature. So is there a reason why we need three other, three employees of the city outside of them? I'm hoping that most of the time it's the city, at least one city council member and our city manager going over these things, but is there a reason why we need more?
Well, this is for our normal day-to-day checks. Typically, it's myself and the finance director sign the checks, but if, for whatever reason, we're not available, then we need somebody on staff as well as somebody who's likely to.
I've been called in several times, and I can think of one particular instance, when we went to League of Cities.
And there was actually a period where we did have to drive them out to Lakeport for Chief Clausen to sign, so. I don't think it's coming, it's been an issue once or twice.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, in the past, before I was here, typically the mayor and the city manager had been signing the checks.
Well, when I first started, it was the mayor and the vice mayor, always. I went through the checks, city manager would check them off. Department heads would make sure that it's all in order, but the final signatures were always the city, the mayor and the vice mayor.
Yeah, now you guys review the warrants.
Oh, we did that too, but it was just kind of an oversight. I think it was just because when we came on, there was a lot of mistrust, I think is what it was, with everybody, so we had done it that way. So, okay, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? So you can all open up for public comment. Any questions of our finance director? You're not rushing up to ask a question, Chris. It's a pretty quiet meeting. Okay, bring it back for action. No further deliberation, as we were just thought.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-04, Resolution of the City Council, the City of Clearlake, appointing the finance director as city treasurer, authorizing signing and endorsing checks, electronic fund transfers, deposits to and withdrawals from operating and investing accounts, and authorizing the certification of the names and signatures of the authorized persons to the financial institutions.
I'll second.
Thank you. Our motion is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Beckman. Now moving on to item number 11, agreed approval of two contracts to Resolution Standard and Voter Approved Measures, the Tax Act, our transition and use tax. Mr. Bolson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will invite our finance director for the deck now to present this one as well.
Okay, good evening. At the last meeting, you remember, I went through the basic description of the next steps for implementing Measure B, and I indicated at that meeting that I would be bringing back some documents for you to approve, which we need to, which needs to be done and submitted to the State Board of Equalization before we can actually start implementing Measure B, and that is collecting the tax and improving our roads. So the way this is set up is it's set up with technically four different actions that I'd like you to do. The four documents are, first is the preparation agreement, the preparatory agreement, which basically authorizes the State Board of Equalization to spend the money to set up the whole process for collecting the transaction and use tax. The second agreement is the agreement between the city and the State Board of Equalization to actually implement that and collect the tax. The third is a resolution that will authorize, sorry, I'm still just thinking about it. The third one is the resolution that authorizes the city manager to execute the agreements and technically to approve the agreements. Now, I'm asking you to separately approve the agreements by motion, but then the resolution in 2014-02 actually approves the agreements for purposes of the state, because the state needs to know that you actually approved them. But I want a separate action by the council separately approving the agreements. And then the last item is Resolution 2014-03, authorizing certain people to examine the transaction and use tax records. The reason that that's important is because tax records for any person or entity in the state of California or in the country are confidential. So the State Board of Equalization cannot simply just hand out data regarding transaction and use tax or sales tax to anybody without a specific authorization to be able to look at. So what that resolution is doing is basically authorizing the city manager, initially the city manager and myself, to be the people to examine those records, and also authorizing the city manager to designate other people as necessary to examine those records. Now typically, what will happen is we have a firm that goes through and does periodic spot audits of the State Board of Equalization's records to make sure that the proper amount of sales tax is being collected and credited to the district. We have a firm called HDL, and I forget the name of it, it's Hindelator and something else. So we appoint them as our agents to go to the state and make sure that the sales tax is being appropriately allocated to the district. And we are the district. So those are the four actions that I'm requesting. So what will happen, assuming that you approve those, is we will forward those agreements to the State Board of Equalization along with a series of other documents that don't need your specific approval. Those are documents that the city generates with the state to the State Board of Equalization no later than February 1, 2017. We will send them out next week to make sure that they get there, but the February 1 date is the drop date by the state. At the next meeting, you will be according to your Measure B oversight committee, then we will be developing a plan for grading of the dirt roads and the paved roads, that's kind of the process after that. The tax. The tax actually begins April 1st, 2017. I think it's a little ironic that it starts on April 4th. Not sure I would have done that, but, okay. And then July 17th should be the time that we will be receiving the first payments under the tax. At this point, I'm estimating, when we set up the tax, we estimated that it would be like $1.6 million a year in additional revenue. Based on last year's revenue, last fiscal year's revenue under Measure P was a half cent. I'm going to revise that estimate up a little bit to about $1.7 million a year.
Yes, sir. Just to be clear, now is that tax going to start retro to January 1st? Or does it begin April 1st?
It begins April 1st. So, our recommended action is that you approve in order the preparatory agreement by simple motion, then the administration agreement by simple motion, then the two resolutions in order. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly when I read through this. We're not actually paying upfront, because I believe it was $175,000 that you quoted us approximately, or no more than $175,000 to prepare for the Board of Equalization to be ready for this tax. That we don't pay it upfront, but it gets taken out of the tax that we would receive after our first payment.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's a not-to-exceed amount of $175,000. I don't expect it to be that much. I'm sure that the state is putting plenty of cushion in there. But it's, this is a little more complicated than just a regular sales tax, because the transaction use tax actually applies to vendors who are outside of the city, in particular automobile vendors, who sell a car perhaps down in Santa Rosa to someone who lives here in Clearlake. That transaction also gets credited to Clearlake as for the 1%. So, that's why it's a little more complicated for them to set up.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Counselor Overton.
So, okay, so our first payment, and this was brought up with $175, they take a portion of that, of what we estimated, that $175, out of each payment that they, that we receive? Or am I correct on that? Like what their time they're spending to do this? That they're going to take a portion of that money that we get in July for their expenses?
My guess would be that they're going to take it initially. They charge us for the, there's a separate charge for the administration of the tax, which is deducted from the sales tax proceeds that we get. So, the $175, I'm sure, is going to be paid out of the first payment.
So, we're not going to receive much of the first in July?
Probably not.
Yeah, it's going to be so little, but, okay.
$2.25, $2.50.
I don't think we'll receive, actually receive that much back to us if they're going to take their fees out of it. But anyways, what I want is, I don't want the public to be prepared that we're going to jump in here and like go do a bunch of rolls, because I don't see that happening with our first payment.
Well, the-
Start.
What I would expect, if we were to wait until we accumulated enough money to begin to pay all of this stuff, the end of summer would be over in 2017. So, it would be unlikely that we would begin to do roadwork next year. I would anticipate the Council, probably management coming to the Council to probably do an inter-fund loan within the city to kind of front-load some of this cost to get the work started to be repaid on future costs.
Add to the future, okay. And that makes sense.
Yeah, when we come forward with our-
I'm just worried that the public's going to think, oh, we got all this money coming, and then something happens and we, you know, we may not have it all, but the inter-loan makes sense.
Yeah, when we come forward with our plan for what we're, how we're going to implement Measure B, we'll also have some type of financing.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
Do you anticipate it, or think that that $175 figure is the total amount for the year? Or will there be additional charges from the state?
Well, I don't, I don't think it'll be $175.
Whatever it is.
Yeah. That will be the total amount that they charge for setting up the system to collect the tax. So, they will charge, as they collect the tax and process the actual funds, they will collect a fee, and I don't remember what the amount is. We pay it on Measure P receipts as well, that they deduct automatically.
If I may, so that means it doesn't change what our expectations of revenue is. It was already considered as far as the fee, the annual fee payment to the Board of Equalization. Since we're getting $800,000 for Measure P, which includes the fee going to the state already, then at that point, we're still collecting what we anticipated to collect.
Correct, yes.
Unless that one time upfront.
Exactly.
Everybody good? All right. We were confused. Any of you have any questions? This is your time to open it up. Ask any questions about Measure B, how the funding is going to begin to trickle in, anything like this. Please step up. Step up when we hear it, otherwise the people in TV land can't hear you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. My name is Suzanne Scholz. This should be, I think, 2017-02, 03?
Yes. Thank you.
The long of our motion is 2017. We can do it.
That was also your comment?
Yes.
We put that, we're trying to slip these in on purpose just to see if you guys are awake. And congratulations, you passed the test. You can remain in the meeting. Anything else? This is a big deal. It's a big deal for all of us. Okay, I'll bring it back to Council. Got some work too. Mr. Becknell, I hope you'll guide us through this, make sure we are reading the materials correctly and forming our motions correctly. So, any other deliberation? Who'd like to start?
I will. Okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve the agreement for the preparation to administer and operate districts transitional and use tax ordinance, the preparatorial agreement. Get that out there.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Could I roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardok?
Aye.
Item 2.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for state administration of district transaction and use taxes administrative agreement.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardok?
Aye.
And item 3.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-02, a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Clearlake, authorizing City Manager to execute agreements with the State Board of Equalization for implement of a local transactions and use tax.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Have a clerk, we will roll call vote.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardok?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-03, a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Clearlake, authorizing the examination of transaction, transaction sales and use tax records.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Could I roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardok?
Aye.
I'd like to congratulate the people of the city of Clearlake. We're going to get some new streets. Well, we're going to resurface some streets. Right, Mr. Director?
That's right.
All right, very good. It's exciting. All right, moving on to Item 12. I placed this with my recommendations in each of your boxes. I don't know if you got them. Prior to the meeting, I did that the other day with my recommended appointments. So, Item 12 is Mayor appointments for 2017.
Excuse me, ma'am. Just to note that you are going a little out of order.
Am I? You know what? It's a big, bold title. Okay. I was excited. I want to tell people what we're doing and the appointments that are about to be made. Mr. Folsom, do you have a report you'd like to give?
A little bit. I want to give you an update on a couple of things. This week, the abandoned vehicle abatement funds was approved by the county. So, we will be having a meeting of our joint powers authority with the city of Lakeport and the county of Lake next week, I believe. We've had a series, just many, many Marijuana Ad Hoc committee meetings over the last month or so since we last met. We had another one just this afternoon. We're making real good progress. We have about half of the cultivation ordinance still to review, but I think we're on track to potentially bring this forward to the Planning Commission in February and then to the City Council after that. Ed, I think you've heard, well, maybe we didn't discuss it here, but at the Judges' Breakfast this morning, we talked about animal control, how our animal control officer is leaving, but we have identified a replacement who is undergoing background and is kind of in training right now to hopefully replace Jenna without losing too much. We really need that training. So, it was a great benefit that we were able to hopefully find somebody who can step right in. Our visitor center is nearing completion. The exterior just needs to get some trim paint. We're going to paint the door. We had a meeting yesterday to go over our selection of final interior improvements. So, we picked out paint. They're going to be picking out some tiles. So, we're getting close. We're hoping to have move-in in February, end of February or beginning of March. Flood control, I want to just offer my thank you and congratulations so far for Public Works, all the improvements that they've done over the last year of replacing culverts, replacing storm drains has really paid off so far this year. Just a little bit of warning to the public. We are getting close to seven foot on the Runzy Gage. So, we're getting close to where we get another big storm, we're going to be in trouble. But so far, Public Works has done a great job. They, we're out over the weekend patrolling the whole city, making sure that if there are any potential blockages that they got cleared. So, that was great. Couple of things just to notify you that are upcoming. Next Tuesday is the Chamber Board Installation Dinner. So, if you're able to make that, that'll be at Main Street Bar and Grill. At 5:30, please RSVP either directly to the Chamber or let me know that you're going to be going so I can RSVP for you. We have Measure B Oversight Board applications are due. I believe, isn't it the 18th, not the 19th? Is it the 18th or 19th? No, given by the 18th whether they do the 19th or not. We also have on the 19th, the NAACP Installation at 1:30 here at City Hall. Our general plan, we're hoping to have that go to the Planning Commission. I have a special meeting on January 31st. So, just to put that on everybody's calendar. And our Public Works Director put this in front of me just as a reminder also, even though this is going to conflict with another very important Planning Commission meeting on February 7th. There is also going to be a Lake County Area Planning Council meeting to discuss future transportation in Lake County, Tuesday, February 7th, at 5:30 to 7:00 at the Community Center at 3245 Towers Avenue. I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. We should just continue the trend. Counselor Overton.
I just want to say yay for the county giving us that money to skip these vehicles off these roads. I'm so happy. So, I guess we've got quite a bit of time here that's went by. So, I just want to say that, you know, I hope everybody had a great holiday. We did do a community dinner and thanks to our Mayor and some other community members, the lower Lake Fire Department. We served approximately 75 people. That would have been always, I mean, I had a place to go. So, we didn't make that a big advertisement. We normally do about twice as many, but this was put on pretty quick. But because they stepped in, it made it really nice. And I really want to say thank you to you guys who did an awesome job of helping us get that done. The point and count for the homeless, one of the things I really want to stress with people, and if you know anybody, when we think of homeless, we normally think of the people out here in the tents. That is a very small percentage of what the state considers homeless. And the reason why we do not get funding is because other people are not counted. If you know somebody that is couch surfing, kids that are couch surfing going from house to house, people who are no longer in their house but staying with somebody, the state considers those all homeless people. And we tend to fail to not get that count. And the reason why our count for homeless is so low is because we don't get that. So, if you know of anybody that is, or please put the word out, to please make sure that they get counted on, is that the 24th? On January 24th, they'll be set up there at Walmart parking lot out there. So, please make sure that they get up there and get counted, because this is the way that we get the funding for army centers and our shelters. And the reason why we don't get money is because these counts are very low when they really, we know that they're high, but they just don't get counted. So, please get out there and get counted. I also want to thank the Public Works, because, oh, let's see, the senior center and the community center did not flood for probably the first time ever that I can remember that we did not, with this much rain, did not actually get into work. It was, it was great. We had no, absolutely no overflow of water. So, the work there was well worth it, because we were able to stay open and service the people that we needed to. And it really makes a big difference when that is there. So, I'm a little more relieved, thinking that, using that as an emergency shelter, as I mentioned before, was always a problem during the flood times. But I'm a little relieved to see that we'll be able to do that. So, thank you guys for making sure that that got fixed. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harris.
Well, I don't have a great deal to communicate about. I did receive a few phone calls from citizens, obviously taking the new role here on the Council, about a couple of different issues that I addressed. And I did meet, I was invited to a community concern citizens meeting about the homeless situation and about housing for the homeless. And there was a lot of really unique discussion. And it looks like we're actually going to make some headway with this. There's a group out of Santa Rosa that's interested in assisting with the homeless issues, but also the structure behind it. So, I think that would be really useful for us, obviously with a much larger population. It gives us a real good structure to work from instead of trying to come up with it ourselves. Other than that, I did receive my orientation this morning, or this afternoon, which was very informative, very much appreciate city staff for coming together to try to get me off the ground, on the ground running as quickly as possible. And I'm going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Counselor Bennett.
The paint board, since we've last met, we have made the position of the station manager from a, I think, three months or four months up to a year's permanent position. And it'll be reviewed again at the end of that year. We're moving forward with moving the station from City Hall over to the Community Center. I believe her and the City Manager, have you already got over there?
Yeah, we met yesterday.
Yeah. And to look at the room that we're going to have. We are moving forward and getting- We are moving forward in getting cameras in place for, it still hasn't been determined exactly what we're going to get in our chambers and in Lakeport chambers, which Lakeport, we need some feedback, or is it going to be done remotely as far as filming there or council meeting by that from here? Or are they going to have somebody trained up there? And so, it's moving along with that.
I'll keep it short since there wasn't too much, since the holidays were in between our last meeting and this meeting. I took part in the meeting for concerned citizens about our homelessness situation in our city. I'm happy to see that so many of us are trying to work. I just want to make sure that we all come together and not do separate things. So, that's really what I'm looking for is how can we all come together to share the resources rather than fight and compete for the little resources we have to be able to help our homeless people out there that are really cold right now. Without being too excited about, I'm excited about marijuana. The conversations we've been having have been really forward-thinking and we're looking for the safety of the community. We're looking for a proper structure. We're looking for professionalism. And I really appreciate the meetings we've had. I appreciate being able to call in. My life has gotten very busy lately and so calling in has been a part of my options, but been part of the meetings, listening in. And I'm excited about what we're doing and I think we're going in the right direction. And I know we're thinking for the best of the community, not just those who partake in marijuana. So, I'm excited about those conversations and where we're going with that. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Well, if you don't recall or remind you, I wasn't here at the last meeting. I tried to give my report and there was some technical difficulties. And the vice mayor said that I could hold it until this meeting. So, I hope everybody's comfortable. It's going to take a while. I want to thank the Public Works director. I went out to our site where we're going to be putting Public Works out on the Canadian Road and they did a test of something called some parazines. And they took some material there on site and they built a road out of it. And this is what we're looking to use for our dirt streets. It's holding up very well. It's holding up even under the heavy loads of our Public Works vehicles that are going up and down using that roadway, which is very exciting and good to see. I think it's a good product. And that's what we're looking to use once we start implementing Measure B and Measure B funding on our dirt streets. So, that was, that was really good to see. I mean, it actually almost looked like paving, but it's not. So, good job, Doug. Thank you very much. And I was, that was, I'm glad you drug me out there. Little premature, but on the same subject, gentlemen of homelessness. When we came back from the League of Cities Conference in Long Beach, I was prompted to meet with the mayor from Lakeport. And with her agreement, we have established a mayor's committee on homelessness between Lakeport and Clearlake. But focusing right now on what we, what can we do from the aspect of those who are either mentally incapable, you know, of sustaining themselves, they've got mental health issues, there's a criminal element. And I have to tell you, people, you need to be very proud of your law enforcement community and our Lake County mental health because they were eager and excited to come to a table. We all sat down. We've actually had two meetings so far. I'm also very pleased and I can't give enough kudos to, same thing in the healthcare district, and Shelley Mascari, who was looking for funding. But I'd like to thank Tim Selly was there, our DA, Don Anderson, Chief of Police Brad Rasmussen from Lakeport, and Chief Selly. Good conversations, looking at how we can solve this. There have been significant inroads and successes when we look at homelessness on an individual basis and not just on grouping people together in shelters and looking at how we can solve homelessness. And there's funding available for this. So, now looking at specific funding sources that are directed toward law enforcement because law enforcement is typically that tip of the sword is out there dealing with them on a regular basis. And I wish that the young lady who came in and spoke earlier during public comment would have stuck around because she is exactly who we want to talk to in, in learning how we can better combat and help those that are homeless and remedying that. Another thing that I want to jump back to is another meeting that we had had, and this is just for community awareness and education. I want to thank again Acting Chief Selly. He brought the group together, business owners from Burns Valley Mall area. And I was surprised to learn that the 15 people that are their frequent flyers, the ones who are having most calls for service down at the Burns Valley Mall, are not homeless at all. Of the 15, only one of those people are actually truly homeless. And I think there's a real big misconception. These folks are just migrants and panhandlers. And they're trying to take advantage of the situation. So, if someone is asking you for money, you might want to rethink that. You might be perpetuating a problem. Typically, the homeless are not the ones that are out there begging for money. So, just keep that, keep that in mind. Thank you again, Tim. I know that we're moving forward with that, doing a little extra patrol. If you're having a problem with panhandling in the Burns Valley Mall, Chief Selly has a program for that. And I'm sure if you're having a problem, you would want to know who you're having a problem with so they can deal with that. We met, APC met, I met with Councilmember Bennett. And I'm excited to say we're going to buy some new Lake County transit vehicles. We had to transition from, we were hoping to get some propane buses, but that didn't work out, costs and things associated with the purchase of those. We're going to be going to a gas, a new gas rig. How many are we going to buy?
Conversion.
Conversion?
Conversion.
Yeah. So, I think it was five of them. So, we'll have some nicer transit vehicles from, from that. That was a good thing. Again, we've had endless marijuana ad hoc committees, but we're moving forward and that's good, good to see. On the 18th of November, I went to Ukiah and I was very pleased I was appointed onto the Public Safety Committee for the California League of Cities. I have my first meeting, it's a policy meeting in Sacramento next week, on the 19th. So, I'll be going to Sacramento on Thursday to attend that, which has a lot to do with fire and law enforcement and things that are dear and dear to me. So, I'm very anxious to get started on that and see what I can bring back to the city. I want to congratulate and thank the staff. We're, I think, coming close to finishing our strategic plan. Correct, Mr. Beckmuller? And I've really been inspired by the city department heads that have been a part of that meeting. And you've got good people here, folks, and they're doing good things and there's good things in our future. And thanks to the vice mayor for also being present at that and at those meetings. Last, again, this is my, this is my makeup report, so you've got to bear with me. All kinds of good news and information and good feedback from the Christmas parade, but I want better next year. We want to do better next year. I already, I met with president-elect for the chamber and we're hoping for more floats. It would be awesome if we could have stores open and maybe serve a hot chocolate and cider. Decorated, we want to have some competition and really blow it out next year. So, if you could keep that in mind and we'll, I'm sure Santa and Mrs. Claus will be back from the, from the North Pole for some photos and autographs. But it was just, it was a really good event, but I know we can do even better. You guys are all awesome. We're doing, we're doing good things. I'd like to congratulate the city in passing Measure B. And that's the last thing I would like to do and I'm looking for consensus from council, to send an open letter to the voters of Clearlake. And just really quickly, I'd like, I prepared this and of course, if you don't agree with what I have to say, we can change it. But real quickly, we, the city council members for the city of Clearlake, would like to thank each and every resident who supported and voted to pass Measure B, our 20-year road improvement sales tax that will significantly change the look of our city. The passage of this measure was critical in the rebuilding plan for our city and it will make significant difference in our future and our children's future. People are watching our city to see what we're doing. And with the passage of Measure B, we received a lot of positive feedback. People are talking about positive changes are happening here and investors are coming to us with their plans of new business and new opportunities within the city of Clearlake. Your city council members recognize the effort and support given to us by our community and we want to thank each and every one of you. Together, we will continue to improve and thrive. Respectfully submitted, Russ Perdok, Mayor, and then I have one for each of you and I'd like to put that out to the media. It's just, this is just a huge, huge step forward in the cleanup of our city. So, if you don't mind, we can all sign it and we'll submit it. Excellent. Thank you. We can do that after the meeting. Good. That concludes my report.
I had something to, a couple of things that you said on the homeless, everybody were all, obviously, on the, on the homeless thing. I don't know if anybody looked at the proposed state budget that just came out. One of the things that is in there that I have to give him some credit for is that, is that he has proposed, I can't remember the exact amount, but it was quite a bit of money for the mentally ill homelessness. Because one of the reasons why we have him is because we've closed down the facilities where they're at. So, that's kind of good because I'm going to say a good, high percentage of ours are in that category. So, hopefully some of that funding would be able to come through, through however we put this together. I think we're all in agreement to that. So, and second, on the Christmas parade, the suggestion that has been kind of brought forth to me several years ago, and I'd like to see if maybe we might be able to incorporate it this next year. And that is to turn the parade around and have it end at the youth center because we have people that would like to do a nice big festival instead of just having it end and end that it actually ends and we'd be inside at Santa Claus. We always have a setup there anyway with chairs and fireplace and, you know, a whole really nice setup and the big Christmas tree and everything. So, hopefully we can consider maybe doing something like that with people that want to put on this festival. We can have other activities going along with, with that. So, I just wanted to put that forth, let us out there.
Thank you. One more thing. I see one of our representatives for CC for C, Nicole, thank you for being here. I've seen you out clearing ditches and drains also and picking up trash. Thank you so much for all you're doing. And with next storm coming in, I'm still a little nervous, but I know you guys did, did some good stuff. Okay. Can I do the back to me? Good. I'm on number 12 now, finally. Holy smokes. So, we just, as people have been mentioning, we've got our ALA funding, our abandoned vehicle authority funds. Gave some consideration to this and I've asked Councilmember Bennett to sit over that. We don't know when they're going to meet, but I'm asking to contact you, Doug. You know about that and we'll be working with that. So, as their hearings come up. Much like it was, I didn't make a whole lot of changes. I just needed to fill spaces with changes in the face of our council with Denise gone and Gina gone. So, again, sewer district advisory board, Vice Mayor Sabatier. There you go. Thank you so much. Keep it flowing. Resource Management Committee, Councilwoman Overton and Councilwoman Harris. Integrated Waste Management Task Force, Solid Waste Diversion Committee in Clearlake Solid Waste. Again, I believe Doug Harren, you're part of that. And I ask Councilwoman Harris. So, if you could kind of, I don't know that you've had a meeting. This is one of those that don't meet very regularly, but only meet as needed.
We've been meeting more last, this last year. So, we got, we've got some meetings coming up here shortly.
Okay. I called Kirk G. Bruno. Still very interested in being on vector control board. Even though his term wasn't up, I just want to make sure everything was rolling okay with Kirk. It was good to talk with him and he's still excited to be a part of that. With the peg board, thank you, Councilwoman Harris. I appreciate you accepting that. And Councilwoman Bennett says that they meet now on the first Monday of the month. He's just corrected. He says it's the second Monday.
That was another test.
Yeah, they, we go back and forth through Lakeport here.
Excuse me. So, what do you, who's the member and the alternate then?
The member is Nick Bennett.
Okay, okay.
Alternate is Phil Harris. Traffic Safety Committee, Councilmember Overton, Councilmember Bennett, yourself, Mr. Folsom and Doug Harren, same as it had been. Redevelopment Oversight Board is myself and Mr. Folsom. Moving along. I'll go back to League of Cities, Area Planning Council, continuing with myself as the, as a member, Nick Bennett as a member. And I'd like to thank, I see Chuck Leonard out there. He's also on that committee and takes a little time, but it's very, very much worth it. We get a lot of good things from that. Lake County Clean Water Program and Advisory Council, Councilmember Bennett has seated on that. We are leaving that vacancy, I believe, because we are going to fill that. It hadn't been filled prior. Or should our Public Works director be appointed on that?
I need to be on that.
Okay, so I'll put what I wanted to ask about. So, Doug Harren, you're on that. And of course, the planning commission, we will work on that coming up as well as our Measure B committee. Anybody have any questions about that so far or changes? Yes, you'll be contacted. Correct. Yeah, you'll be notified of the meetings and when they're going to take place.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just can you clarify again for me what you did with ATC? How did you even quite call?
Myself and Nick Bennett.
So, Nick would be the alternate?
Alternate.
Or is there, you got a vacant member?
Well, it alternates. I believe this year, Lakeport has two voting members. We only have one. Okay. Next year, we'll have both. Okay. And then item 13, which is appointments for League of Cities. I received an email requesting consideration from Councilmember Overton. And we've served on this in several capacities prior. I met with Councilmember Overton. We discussed that and I contacted Sarah. We're going to move forward if you guys are okay with that.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The last item, number 12, by motion, the council accepts your appointments.
Well, yeah, I was just listing up here, so I just wanted to carry you kind of.
Okay.
Well, let's deal with item 12 first. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just had a quick question. You didn't go over LaFco, no changes on LaFco? Still Joyce Overton as, or Councilmember Overton as the primary member and me as the alternate?
Apologize, I skipped over that.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, thank you.
And also, and I don't mind the, and I don't mind the change, but I believe I was the alternate for the League of Cities. Now, it's Joyce, number.
It were, with Gina was.
Yes. Okay. Just wanted to make sure and I appreciate it being taken off.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I know your time is very precious. I apologize, I missed a, I missed a page, man. So, yeah, for LaFco, Councilwoman Overton is a member. Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Sabatier is alternate. And the very important, we meet so many times, the Lake County Airport Land Use Commission with myself as a member and Nick Bennett as alternate. I do now that we've finished it.
Okay, I so move that we accept appointments as presented by the mayor.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. And then, as I begin to explain, and I apologize for getting out of order now, on agenda to item 13, which is appointments of California League of Cities Redwood Empire Division, which is now Resolution 2017-05, resolution of city council, city of Clearlake appoint representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the California Cities Redwood Empire Division business meetings and to represent the city and vote at division legislative committee meetings. Myself as primary and Councilmember Overton as alternate. Any comments or discussion? No, just any comments before I open up? None? All open up to the public. Anyone in public wanting to discuss item 13, the appointments to the California League of Cities, please come forward. of Cities, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back. Any discussion or deliberation? Do I have a motion for the resolution then? Or do you do now?
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration of appointing Councilmember Mr. Mayor Perdok as the primary, Councilmember Overton as the alternate, as representatives to the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division, Resolution Number 2017-05, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Clearlake, appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of Cities, League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division Business Meetings, and represent the city and vote at the Division Legislative Committee meetings.
Thank you, sir. Second. I have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Are we concluded? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Can we do that?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Make a motion, a privilege.
We're adjourned. Thank you.